Good evening. My name is Arts Bru. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. This is the Town of Chatham Planning Board Hybrid Meeting, June 9, 2025. It's 5:00 PM. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. I see no hands raised. Present pursuant to Governor Healy's March 28, 2025 signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30, 2027, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number (508) 945-4410, conference ID (288) 156691, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Okay, we'll like to begin with roll call vote. Kathryn Elper.
Present.
Warren Chain.
Present.
Bob Burshafter.
Present.
Charlene Greenhall.
Present.
Frank Shear.
Present.
Bob Dubus.
Present.
And Arts Bru, I'm present. Like to begin with some of the mid minutes. Let's see, May 12th. Are there any comments or edits to the minutes? I have, I have a few. On the bottom of page 2, about fourth line up from the bottom, it says, although the front of the property is zoned mixed-use, the rear is zoned residential. This is related to the 1533 Main Street. Actually, the front of the property is now R20 zone also, so the entire property is, is a residential. So if that can just be adjusted. And on top of page 3, the third line down where it says, foot candles no higher than five feet, just take the mark off, it should just be the numeral 5, and put a root number in front of 28, which is the fourth line down. And then on the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down on that, at the very end, it says, members also indicate they would like to see fencing around the whole property. I think we asked for east, south, west, south, and east side of the property. Isn't that right? Yeah, I didn't think we were.
Yeah, I had the same comment.
Yeah, okay. Those, those were the only edits that I noted. If not, not any other comments or adjustments, I have a motion for approval?
Just relating it to the fencing comment you just made.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I believe we had discussion as to what type of fencing we were talking about. You know, the split rail fence is not what we had in mind. It was either a solid fence or a stockade fence or with what was being talked about. So perhaps it ought to be more specific.
So perhaps insert the word solid before fence side?
I think we used the word solid.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Well, that also. Okay, with those adjustments, I have a motion.
Ms. Chairman, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of May 12, 2025, as amended on the floor. I move we approve them.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Kathryn.
I approve.
Warren.
And I approve. I approve.
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 Abstain.
Oh, yeah, okay. And Arts Bru, I approve. Next is the meeting on May 19th, the minutes. Any comments or edits on this?
I had the same comment about the fencing.
Okay.
Which is on page 3, the third paragraph up, where we said including requesting a fence along the property.
Okay.
And again, it was a solid fence, I guess.
Okay. The only thing I had is on page 2, I think it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th paragraph up, it's where this is underneath 48 Sylvan Way. It says that Mr. Spru said the right-of-way was approved in the 70s. I'm not sure if it was approved in the 70s or 80s, and I think if you could just confirm that. Other than that, I was, no other comments?
It was definitely the 80s. I was not here in the 70s.
Yes, okay. All right, that's what I thought. So if there's no other comments or edits, do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the May 19, 2025 meeting minutes as amended here.
I second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Kathryn.
I approve.
Warren.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob.
Abstain.
Charlene.
Approve.
Frank.
Approve.
Bob Dubus.
Approve.
And Arts Bru, I approve. Okay, site plan approval. This is amended amendment to 200 Meeting House Road, Sun Self-Storage. Do I have someone from the applicant here? Please go right ahead up. If you could state your name for the record.
Molly McGregor, one of the owners.
John Hutchins, contractor.
Okay, why don't you go through and walk us through your changes or amendments that you're seeking?
So, we're coming here tonight to try to keep some of the existing, are they oaks?
We got some pine and we have some oak. Yes, but they seem to be, trees are doing well. They're not dying, so there was no reason to take them down. And it wasn't shown on the original drawing. It showed new trees in that placement, so it didn't make sense to kill trees, to put trees in. So we wanted to try to leave the trees there and add trees to them.
Yeah, the ones we were talking about were on the north side of the island here. And then still adding the trees on the south side there.
Yes.
And I think the letter that was presented to you.
Thank you.
Was a little misleading. We're not trying to reduce the area of the island that we're talking about expanding into what's gravel now. We just want to make it grass instead of, I think on our plan, we had, it was built up.
Yeah.
So like the backside of the island. I know we talked about, we just need to show the HVAC units on the final site plan and from the site visit, I know they're located and they're shown on this, this like in the middle of the plan, as built between the two buildings. I know when we came in front of the planning board a couple of years ago, we didn't know if they were going to be on the roof or if they were going to be on the ground. So they are on the ground between the two buildings. And we are proposing moving the handicapped parking space from the front to the back by the storage entrance where we do have ADA units available.
Could you clarify that? I'm not quite sure where you're moving it to.
Yeah, so can I go over and point and speak, or do I have to?
Should be a pointer.
Oh, boy. Okay, so I think it's shown right now by this tree.
Yeah.
And we were talking about putting it, is this weird thing, John? Like right here by this entrance to the storage?
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm not sure that that's a viable alternative. From what I understand, your retail establishment, which is fronting on Meeting House Road.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
Is, is where you would need to have a handicap space.
Okay, it's currently, it's not, it's not a public.
It's not retail.
We're not, it's not retail because retail there was like adjacent to a use before. So this, that's, they've used it as an office. And I'm just thinking be more usable for customers at the storage.
Charlene?
It still requires, if there's no immediate access from the handicap space.
Yeah.
To the front building, that's a problem.
Yeah.
So, I mean, technically, there should be a space for each building.
Right.
Okay.
So we need to add one in the back then as well.
I mean, there should be.
Yeah.
In all honesty, I'm a little confused as to the plan that got presented and what is actually being asked for at this point.
Originally, the engineer had the buildings connected. And I'm not sure why he had that, but he thought that the two buildings would be connected and that people would walk through that front building to access the storage and by means of using a wheelchair. That's not feasible to connect the buildings. It never was. But I think originally he proposed that. It shows on the original site plan. So there was no really reason to do that, to try to join the buildings.
And I have a question. I remember on the site visit, it came to light that there was yet another use in that front building, that another business. And we wanted you to provide more details about that particular use.
Yeah, on the upstairs?
You know, I don't recall.
On the main floor, right?
On the main floor, yeah. But it was yet an additional use that we weren't aware of. And so we did want you to provide more details about that use. Yeah, it's a, as I recall, was a separate business.
There is. Gainor's Consignments is on the first floor.
Gainor's Consignments, okay.
Yeah, and they use it for, they have online auctions and they use it for shipping.
Okay.
So I do know that they.
So it's an office and they ship things in and out from there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So when you made this change, where you disconnected the two buildings and the ADA access, has that been passed by the building commissioner? Because he would want to make the call on that.
Yeah, the building commissioner's aware of that, or the building department's aware of that, because it didn't, in order to do that, would have to prioritize a corridor to get to the main.
Right.
Building. And that just wasn't feasible to do. It just wasn't something, not that we wouldn't want to do, it just didn't make sense to do that.
Then, I think you have to go back and get a clarification if a handicap space is required on, on each side.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Okay.
All right.
Definitely do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Charlene, any other comments?
Well, again, I feel like we have the as-built plan, but we're missing.
Yeah.
Proposed revised plan of what it was they wanted to do.
I agree.
Because I was at the onsite, we talked about a number of different things. And also, an as-built plan should be showing where the actual parking spaces are.
Right.
The, you know, the handicap space in the gravel out front, on fronting on Meeting House Road definitely needs to be some kind of hardened surface.
Yeah.
But we're kind of, we're, I feel like we're missing.
Yeah.
So the as-built, that's here is just what we've done so far. We had held off some of it for landscaping for.
So you're looking for guidance at this point, if we're good with?
Yeah, because we have, I mean, we have the, the proposed plan. I don't know if it's still.
You should still have that, right?
Is that still in this package?
We don't, no, we don't have a proposed plan. Normally, we submit an as-built when all the work is done.
Yeah.
And so to submit an as-built now, it kind of isn't exactly what we need.
I agree, but that was what was asked for to come to this meeting.
What was required.
Okay.
Right. They needed to do the as-built in order to comply with the statement of conditions. That was one of the items. And then when at the site visit, the issue of the trees, keeping the trees, and then the potential options for the island. So those are the two things that I was expecting to hear tonight. The, I think the handicap spot, we didn't quite understand. So that, so the planning board doesn't have anything proposed because we don't have anything new that's new proposed. Does the as-built, I'm guessing it doesn't, because we did talk about expanding the island towards the existing building along route.
The existing road.
Yes.
The existing road, right.
And that is, go ahead.
And instead of doing landscaping, we had discussed grass.
Yeah.
So this as-built plan does not represent that?
No.
Okay.
We're not trying to change that area from what was on the proposed plan.
Okay.
We're just trying to change it.
We're not, we're going to keep this.
Yeah, we're going to keep it.
What we're going, what we wish to approve, as I remember from the site visit, is you do need to change that area. You need to expand it with some grass.
That is in the proposed landscape plan, is already expanding that.
Yeah.
Yeah, she wants to, she wants to, she's saying they're going to expand it from what it is existing to what was originally shown on the, from the area. Just they're changing it from some of the shrubs to just lawn, landscaped lawn, is what I understood.
Yeah, that's fine. I think that's what we agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's what we're proposing.
Mr. Chairman, I see. I think then for tonight, based upon what you're saying, that you're not changing the, the actual plan that you had, like as far as the.
Just when it comes to the trees.
Width of the, or the size of the island, right?
Yeah.
So the planning board would be looking to make a decision on that and make a decision on whether or not you're all right with them keeping the trees. And then if that's the case, then you would show this, these two things on your as-built plan.
Once we do, yeah.
Along with your, your final as-built plan, along with the HVAC. And then as far as the handicap thing, then we'd have to.
Okay, clarification.
Something else. You'd have to come back for that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
You know, give us an update so that.
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Dubus.
If you have something first, go ahead.
All right. So when you, when you have your consultant put together the as-built plan, you should show the islands on what is the final islands. There's a couple of them that were noted on the proposed plan. The parking spaces, there's parking spaces in the front and the side on the building that fronts on Meeting House Road. There's parking spaces that are at the storage facility in back. So all of those should be identified and shown down in here. I do see that you are showing your underground structures, but there needs to be information associated with what those, what those are. And you know, it's a catch base and usually the top and an invert, you know, the rim and an invert are identified. So make sure, your engineer should know what the as-built plan should consist of.
Yeah, and I think it's to, to the drawing, so he's.
Yeah, okay. Bobby, if you have someone else?
Yeah, I have a question. The office that's in the front.
Yep.
Is that the office to, to register? You want a, a storage unit?
No.
Where, where, if you wanted to get a storage unit, where do you walk in?
You would walk in on, well, a lot of it's done online, but we also have a property, you know, at 218 Meeting House Road. So.
So if somebody wanted to contain, a unit or a thing, they, they would go to the other building where there's an office?
Yes.
Okay. So the office you have out front, what is, is that just for you people to have? Or, or this?
It's rented to a third party, not connected to the storage at all. It's where Gainor's is.
Yeah. That's irrelevant. I just want, is it, is it open to the public?
No.
It's private?
Yes.
Okay, then, then I'm, I, I feel that a handicap place on that side, because it's a private office. Is that correct?
I don't think that makes any difference, Bobby. It's.
Okay, well, well, I'm just letting you, my, my opinion, okay?
Appreciate it.
That I would, I would rather see the handicap on the backside where people are going to walk in and out and get the contain, and get the storage units.
Right, and we do have ADA.
As long as it's not open to the public, that's, that's up to the building inspector.
Right. Okay, and we'll go for.
Just throwing that out in my opinion.
Okay, so I think the only thing we have to make a decision on now is keeping the trees, the existing trees in place of the two trees that were shown, and the landscape island being grass.
I'm totally good with that.
Yeah.
And I think that's all.
I would love to see those trees remain because they're.
That's right.
They're nice.
Yes.
Okay.
But the size of the island will also.
Well, that'll stay, stay as it was originally proposed.
As proposed, not, not according to this so-called as-built plan.
No, not according to this plan, right.
Okay. Yes. Okay, great.
All right. So any other comments or questions associated with this? Okay, so do I have a motion for, we should make a motion on this and, and vote on this.
I move that we.
Thank you. I move, I move that we approve the request to maintain the trees as shown and to complete the island as proposed. And that the, that you consult with the building commissioner to determine if there's a handicap space is required in both parking lots.
Can I make one, for the island, if the size is as proposed, but it's not with the shrubs that are.
That's correct.
Exactly, so that it be grass.
Yeah, so the size would be the same.
Yes.
And do I have a second?
I second.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Kathryn Elper.
I approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Burshafter.
Bob Burshafter, approve.
Charlene Greenhall.
Approve.
Frank Shear.
I approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
And Arts Bru, I approve.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This was just confusing to me.
It was.
Shouldn't it be like existing conditions?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what it should be.
Okay, we have a public hearing on 799 Forest Beach Road. It's east, southeast, modification of a subdivision, definitive subdivision plan. And I think.
I got it.
Yep, you have it, good. If you can, if you can read the notice.
I can. As required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81L and 81O, the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham will hold a plan, a public hearing on Monday, June 9, 2025, at 5:00 PM at the Chatham Town Hall Annex located at 261 George Ryder Road, Chatham, Mass. to consider the application of Alan D. Perrow, Pro, Perrow, and Joan Perrow for approval to modify a definitive subdivision plan entitled "Definitive Subdivision Plan Being a Division of Lot 4, Land Court Plan 9105-C in Chatham, Massachusetts. Plan set date July 29, 2021 with the revisions through O319, 2025. Revised plans prepared for Alan D. Perrow and Joan M. Perrow, showing a subdivision of land owned by Alan D. Perrow and Joan M. Perrow, 131 Whittaker Lane, Hingham, Mass. Plan prepared by East Southeast LLC. Modified subdivision plan including definitive subdivision plan, topographic plan, site construction plan, plan and profile and detail sheet. A copy of the plan and application may be reviewed at the Community Development Department located at 261 George Ryder Road on weekdays, Monday through Thursday, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM and between 8:00 AM and noon on Fridays. Any person who's interested or wishes to be heard on the proposed subdivision plan should appear on the date, time, and place designated for the hearing. Charlene Greenhall, clerk, Chronicle publication dates of May 22 and May 29, 2025."
Okay, we'll begin with the presentation by the applicant. Dan, are you representing the applicant on this?
That I am. Good afternoon. For the record, Thad Eldridge for the Southeast. We've been here a few times on this one.
Yep.
Yes, two on sites, two preliminaries, two everything. And so now, after much consideration, the applicant has decided what he was left with for the vacant lot, he can't build his retirement home there. So he would like to flip the areas. Originally, we had a 30,000 square foot lot to the north and a 40 to the south. Now he wants the 40 to the north, the 30 to the south. The one other change that we have is the driveway easement that the planning board did not care for from the onset is being eliminated. That would be, the southerly lot will only have access from Bobby's lane. That work will be put upon the buyer of the property in order to develop that, which leaves opportunity for conservation or the town to make an offer.
Okay, so that's the only two things that you're doing on this, changing law line and removing that one easement. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then we'll begin with some comments or questions by the board members. I'll start at the other end. Bob Dubus.
I don't have any problem with this. I think it's a wise decision.
Yep. Frank Shear?
I agree with that comment.
Yep. Charlene?
I have nothing.
Bob Burshafter?
Same here.
Warren?
I have no comments, other than to. Um, I, I have no comments other than to ask if we can be assured that the issues that related to drainage on, um, what is it, Bobby's lane? Um, that were of great concern to the butters and neighbors have been addressed. I think the plans that I've seen in the past got, um, oh, um, got a, a thumbs up in terms of trying to deal with the, uh, the water issues on, on Bobby's lane.
Uh, none of that has changed, right? That, that's still in.
Correct. And again, the, the proposal is to treat and dispose of all the stormwater runoff generated on the property and on the little bit of pavement that's being proposed on Bobby's lane itself. The underlying problems from the town's tennis court and from Judy's lane still remain. The neighbors have installed a leaching catch basin in order to help remediate some of those. Those problems are not really the responsibility of the applicant.
And the work required to keep the stormwater on the site, um, are not, are they to be done now? Or are they going to be the responsibility of whoever buys that lot?
They'll be the responsibility of the buyer of the property.
Okay, okay. So that, that's new, okay. And I saw nothing in the way of comments from neighbors or butters about this proposal. Is that correct?
I, I think that's the case, right? We have no comments in writing?
That is correct. We have no comments in writing.
Well, you know, I think.
We have not received any comments verbally.
I think it's come a long way and it's really quite good, so no further comments.
Okay. Catherine?
Yes, I agree. I think this was a wise decision. I do have a question, which may not be something that we have to answer here, but if the southerly lot is sold and that person decides to build a house on that lot or decides to develop that lot, this will be a residential lot potentially and the planning board would not review it? So what assurance do we have or what would be the mechanism to ensure that that access is built correctly? And that the drainage is handled correctly?
Hmm, that's a.
The roadway itself, Pierce Path, that would be subject to review by the planning board or by the DPW staff.
Right.
Okay.
That would include an as-built and, and everything else. The stormwater and the, the full design that was done of the property itself does not go before the planning board.
Right.
Right, that's why I'm asking this question, yeah.
Just like any other development of a vacant lot, it's up to the developer to meet the standards of stormwater runoff.
Right.
There's no real review of it.
Because, yes, that's my question, because when it's a subdivision, we review it, but when it's sold, it will no longer be a subdivision. And the issue was, those issues were on the southerly lot. So I'm just posing the question, how do those issues get addressed and enforced in a sense?
Okay.
And I'm asking Christine and Art and.
Catherine, it's, it's up to the building inspector to make sure that the water doesn't go onto the public road.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Then, then I have no issues. I think this is a good solution and thank you.
And I do not have any comments or questions. But proceeding, going through the plan, uh, public hearing procedures, uh.
Art, I'm sorry, I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and I'm gonna reiterate what Catherine said.
Yep.
Um, the plan and profile shows certain improvements being.
It's true.
It's on the plan and profile.
Right.
And if the lot gets released, Lot 6 gets released from covenant, we're saying it's fine and hunky-dory.
Mm-hmm.
But it's really not if this hasn't been done yet.
If it hasn't been built, yeah.
Right, but they can't sell the lot until the lot's been released from covenant.
Right.
So we're, we're in a, to me, a catch 22.
Yep.
Yeah.
Perhaps rather than a covenant, we should be looking at a performance bond.
Yep. Uh, that would be something the applicant would have to come back to us on.
Um, 'cause otherwise, this would have to be constructed.
I would agree.
Before the board can release Lot 6 from covenant.
That's correct.
Yes, correct. And if we approve this sub, sorry, I'm just diving in here. If we approve this altered subdivision plan with, you know, the access off of Bobby's lane for the southerly lot, that's what we're approving.
Right.
So we can't, you can't sell the lot without that access being built. It has to be built.
The, the board would have to release the first covenant on the original plan.
Right.
Institute a new covenant on this modification plan.
Okay.
But we need something.
Yep.
We need that hook to make sure that what is shown on the plan and profile, this is what is being proposed.
Yep.
Actually gets constructed.
Yep.
Yes, that's true.
Prior to the sale, we would actually look for a release of the developed lot and keep the undeveloped lot under the terms of the covenant to go along with the conveyance.
But as, if I'm hearing correctly through you, Mr. Chairman, what we heard is it's gonna be up to the developer of Lot 6 to put in the drainage.
And we're saying we can't do that.
But you can't, we can't release Lot 6 for, for construction of a new dwelling because the road hasn't been done yet.
Been built, yeah.
Correct. That's, yes, that's correct.
We wouldn't be releasing Lot 6. We'd request the release of Lot 5.
Which I don't even know why Lot 5 would even need to be under the covenant, quite frankly.
Correct. It doesn't, right.
But it doesn't need to be part of the covenant or if it's.
Buyer will accept the property. I mean, there's nothing stopping anybody from selling the entire subdivision with the covenant. So the covenant would go along with the conveyance and then the buyer would be responsible.
I'm, I'm still confused here.
Well, I, I thought that we had established certain access requirements for Lot 5 also. That was part of the, part of the roadway plan designs for that. There was, I think it's a 12-foot drive that was noted in there.
I'm not seeing anything.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, uh, if they did not touch the road for, for Lot 5, and they didn't use an easement to try to go across Lot 5.
To Lot 6.
That, that the road stays exactly the way it's been.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes.
It's already been there, it's already done. By putting the road, the access down on Bobby's lane.
Right.
For Lot 6.
They, they don't, yeah, for Lot 6, they, they don't have to do anything to the other road.
Got it.
Yes, that's correct.
Got it.
And that's why I'm questioning why Lot 5 would even need to be under covenant.
Right.
Doesn't.
Lot 6 needs to be either under covenant or some kind of a performance bond or guarantee, something to ensure that the construction of that is completed.
Yes.
Prior to conveyance.
All right, but we don't have that part of this application in front of us, though. So is that something that you think the applicant would like to do?
But the covenant would go with Lot 6 with the conveyance. Whoever buys it would be responsible for the construction.
But it can't be conveyed until this board releases it from covenant and then there's no guarantee that it would be completed.
If Lot 5 is not part of it, every covenant has, there's nothing prohibiting somebody from selling the entire subdivision. And in this case, the entire subdivision under the terms of the covenant would be Lot 6 with the road.
Then it's not a subdivision.
Of course it is.
Well, they, they split off a lot, so that was part of it. And the only way to have that lot split off is they had to create funds and it was created off of Bobby's lane.
I understand that, but, I mean, lots, help, help.
Under the terms of every covenant.
Okay, so your staff, staff report has, um, proposed conditions as put forth by the applicant in this particular case. It also has, you, you also have in your packet the 2022 covenant that was, that you approved at the time. I think you need to have some combination of those two things. So we've given you the, all of the pieces for that. And then, right, you could also have, you could have a bond in addition because per the subdivision regulations, you can have either a covenant or a bond or both. So you need to do some things to protect that, so that you ultimately have, they, they wanna make this a buildable lot. They don't want to, they're changing how it was, how it was laid out initially. The areas are basically swapping, kind of, um, so we do need some revisions to the plans at the end of the day. You know, you can make it an administrative approval after the fact, but you need to decide whether or not you have a bond or whether or not you're gonna go with a covenant. You have recommendations in front of you. You have to make those decisions in order to move forward.
So the original statement of conditions, under condition three, it states Lots 5 and Lot 6 shall be subject to the terms of the covenant till such time as the infrastructure improvements are constructed and certified as, or a performance bond is provided to be held by the treasurer of the town of Chatham. So that's essentially what we're saying there.
If we skip the statement and go right to the covenant, number two, this covenant shall run with the land and be binding upon successors entitled to the premises on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
Number three is Lot 6 shall be subject to the terms of the covenant.
Right.
And then number five, nothing herein shall be deemed to prohibit a conveyance subject to this covenant by a single deed of the entire parcel of land shown on the subdivision plan or all lots not previously released by the planning board without first providing such ways and services.
Yeah.
So there's nothing stopping somebody from conveying the undeveloped property with the covenant imposed upon it.
I, I think that's the case, Charlene, and that. And, and based on condition three, if they want to do something at Lot 6, they would need to provide us with a performance bond associated with that.
Or they would need to construct the road and.
Or construct it, right, completely. So.
I, I still think this is a really odd way to, to do this.
Yeah, I, I agree, actually.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, uh, let's go with Bob first and then Warren.
All right, we have, we have a situation almost like this where the lot, if the lot's sold, you cannot get a building permit till they put a bond up.
Mm-hmm.
Or in one case, a road, a road reconstruction if it was damaged. But in the same idea, we could maybe not, not have a
Thanks.
Uh, a building permit till, till they put a bond up to construct the, uh, the adequate drainage and driveway.
Right.
Uh, in that aspect, so that, so that the buyer is gonna be responsible
Yep.
for it, to put the bond up before the building permit.
Right. That's, that's what I understand by reading the conditions and the covenant. Okay, Warren?
My concern here is only that whatever is done by a new buyer with respect to, um, completing the drainage that I've now seen at least two presentations on and a great deal of work has been done, to ensure that, that that is the, um, requirement to complete what has already been proposed and signed off by the engineers and everything else as solving the problem. As opposed to coming forward to us and saying, well, we have an idea how to deal with the, the drainage. And what was approved as part of our understanding here is forgotten. You know, somehow we know we need to capture exactly what was proposed before and was deemed to be adequate.
Right. Well, if, if there was a new buyer and that buyer wanted to come forward with some changes, they would have to amend this, this subdivision.
No, because they're only buying the lot. They're not, they're not buying the subdivision. Once the lot is sold, we're not approving the subdivision anymore. We're not in charge of the subdivision anymore. We don't have purview over it. It's a resident, it's a building of a single home on a residential lot.
Yeah.
No, the covenant still applies. They buy the lot with the covenant in place, so they're buying the covenant.
Okay.
They're buying the requirement to construct everything in accordance with the plan or return with a different plan.
So it's on the building department to not give a building permit to, until?
Until it's released.
I would suggest that we put the lots under covenant and that we also put in place a performance bond for Lot 6 to ensure that the work is done.
You can't make them do a performance bond unless they asked for one.
Right.
But also I'm realizing the original was never even recorded, so there's nothing to release.
Yeah, they haven't recorded it yet.
And is this really a modification because they never recorded it?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
But that being said, I will, I would be happy to continue this as a modification, but there's nothing that needs to be released.
Mm-hmm.
Because it was never recorded, so there's no, um, you know, book and page or.
Right.
They're not, they're not asking you for.
They're not asking you for a release at this point. They're asking for a modification.
Modification.
Right, but we, I, I originally said they need to have the release of the original covenant, but they don't.
They don't, yeah.
It was never recorded.
Never recorded, you're right.
So the subdivision plan we're modifying doesn't actually exist.
Right.
Well, it, it exists insofar that we approved it.
It was endorsed.
Yeah.
But it was never recorded.
Was never recorded.
Either at the registry deed or land court.
Right.
So technically, it doesn't exist for the purposes of assessment and that kind of thing.
Right, okay.
Bob, you have?
Is it possible to record this modification and then keep a copy of the plan with Lot 5 in its folder? So when it does change, ends, that it will go to the buyer for Lot 6. I mean, there's gotta be someplace to hold this. And obviously, you're not, you're gonna have a lot for, uh, a folder for Lot 6 that's just a vacant lot. But that this would go with it with the idea that this is the drainage that belongs with it.
That, that's the only thing I can think of is once this is recorded and it has a covenant with it, then they would have to comply with that covenant before any, any law release occurs.
Would it also make sense to indicate on the covenant that, um, another, you know, somewhere in here in number eight, that there shall also be a statement of condition that runs with the property?
Both of those would be recorded and they'd be on the certificate of title for the, or they'd be registered.
In a perfect world, they would discover both of these documents at the same time, but we know that doesn't always happen.
Well, it's the plan that we have of the, of the drainage that we wanna keep.
Yes, right.
Exactly.
That's the problem, because if you don't keep it with that.
Yes.
And that's what we want, then, like you say, another engineer can tell you, look, I'll just put a catch basin in and a drywall, that's it, period.
Yeah.
We have no room for back and forth on it.
So somewhere either in the covenant or the statement of conditions, it needs to, to very clearly indicate that Lot 6, that the, the road as shown on the, the plan and profile here submitted shall be constructed per that plan with the date and everything.
Yes.
We don't.
And also all the drainage specifications that get specified.
The construction of the ways and the installation of municipal services shall be provided to certain.
That is not your turn.
We have to carry forward everything that we approved but was never recorded, carry it forward to this approval and, and then put together what our covenant and statement of condition is of this approval.
It does not, it does not mean anything about what kind of building they put on there.
Right.
We have nothing to do with that. All we have is the driveway and the frontage and the drainage.
And the drainage.
All right, so what?
We need to carry that forward to this.
All right, so what I'm hearing is since the covenant was no, and was never recorded, then we can establish your condition eight to the covenant and anything else so that this new covenant and, um, plan is recorded in that way? Is that what you're suggesting, uh?
I am, but I'm also, um, I would like to see, I would like to see that this is continued. I know the public still has, you know, an opportunity here. I would like to see this continued so we see that draft statement, conditions and that draft covenant.
Yeah, okay.
So that we can approve that.
Right.
And, and, um, in the, um, in the list on the recommended conditions, and thank you, this was a great job that you did on this, but I would like to see the dates for like the, the plan and profile on listed specifically so that it's not, well, in case we've run in this before, a new plan and profile shows up, we don't know which date it was.
Right.
So I thi, I, I think based on some current issues, I think specificity is important.
Yeah, I mean, yes. And all the documents that were in the initial approved plan that are not here before us, like the drainage specifications, we need to bring them here so we have them. Because they're part now of this approval. So, and I don't, I didn't see them.
I, I didn't either.
Yeah. So, so it just has to be complete. We need to bring forward everything from the previous approval.
Okay.
So it's complete.
I, I'm, I'm okay with doing that because I'd like to see the changes to the covenant in any conditions.
And it needs to be outlined. Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, I, I didn't say it didn't.
Okay. All right, um, I, so, you're right, so this, but the suggestion is to continue that, get those edits done, let's review that, perhaps at as early as we think we can get that, um, at our next earliest meeting. All right, so-
Just to confirm-
Go ahead.
Bob, um, we, as a board, have seen the drainage plan and the proposal that passed muster with all of the engineers and so on. And that drainage plan and the documents supporting it would be part of the package we're putting together that would be referred to in this covenant.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Yeah. All right, so, um, since this is a public hearing, I want to go through the rest of our process in here. Um, I'd like to open this to public statements in favor of the application, if anybody, uh, either remotely or in the audience. I don't see any hands raised. There is no correspondence, am I correct? So any public statements opposing the application? I don't see any hands raised, no one from the audience. No rebuttals are necessary, so, uh, actually, the, with this, we're not going to really close this hearing, then-
No.
We're going to continue it.
Right, um, I'd like to hear from the applicant's rep, though, when-
Yeah.
He might be able to have all of this, so we continue it-
Yeah.
To a date and time certain that makes sense.
I believe the question is for the planner, when can she have the covenant and statement of conditions prepared?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, when will this, the covenant and statement of conditions be prepared?
So, um-
I mean, that's what we're looking for, isn't it?
Right, so I ha, I have a draft here already, so you could have that by the end of the week.
Okay.
Um, the next meeting is the 23rd, so if you want to continue it to the 23rd- Is that too tight, though, for, for you? Because he needs to get everything back to you in a timely manner to be in the packet? I, I don't want to crunch you and I don't want to crunch-
So, a- again, all we're looking for is a covenant and a statement of conditions at this point, correct?
So the, your report that you have in front of you tonight has draft statement of conditions there, so I'll make some revisions to it. So that is, that is the, the draft that was- I guess what I'm asking, are you comfortable, are you comfortable? I'm comfortable with that, yeah, I am. All right, if you want to continue until the 23rd. I don't want to rush, I've been in your shoes, I know what it can be like.
All right, so we're looking to continue this hearing until June 23rd, correct?
And do we know what time that meeting is going to begin?
It's at five o'clock.
I move that we continue this public hearing to Monday, June 23rd, no earlier than 5:00 PM.
Second.
Second, okay. A roll call vote, Catherine Hopper?
I approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Worschaftter?
I approve.
Uh, Charlene?
Approve.
Frank Scher?
I approve.
Bob Dubas?
Bob Dubas, approve.
And Art Spur, I approve. We'll see in a couple of weeks.
In principle, it's okay, Bobby.
Messy.
Yeah, but you need to make sure all the information is there.
Yeah.
And we approve it again.
Okay, uh, we have another public hearing with, um, zero Evergreen Lane. It's Clark Engineering, this is a modification of the definitive subdivision. We'll begin with, um, a public notice read by the clerk.
That would be me. As required by Mass General law, chapter 41, sections 81L and 81O, the planning board of the town of Chatham will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 9, 2025, at 5:00 PM at the Chatham Town Hall Annex located at 261 George Ryder Road, Chatham, Mass, to consider the application of the following. Shepherd-Payne revocable trust for approval to modify the definitive subdivision plan entitled subdivision plan of lot one, Plan Book 273, page 100, in Chatham, Massachusetts, Book 606, page 16, dated 2004. Modification plan showing a redivision of lots 1A and 1B, Book 606, page 17, dated 2005. Modification to definitive subdivision plan is prepared for Shepherd-Payne revocable trust, 280 Islington Road, Auburndale, Mass, plan prepared by Clark Engineering, LLC. Modification date, plan date, May 7, 2025. A copy of a plan, of the plan and application may be viewed at the Community Development Department located at 69, uh, 261 George Ryder Road on weekdays, Monday through Thursday, between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM, and between 8:00 AM and noon on Friday. Any person who is interested or wishes to be heard on the proposed definitive subdivision plan should appear on the date and time placed designated for the hearing. Charlene Greenhutch, clerk, Cape Cod Chronicle, print dates, May 22nd and May 29, 2025.
Okay, um, begin with a presentation by the applicant. David, are you representing the applicant?
Yes, David Clark, Clark Engineering, on behalf of Susan Shepherd and Barry Payne, who are in the audience. So what we're formally requesting now, after a, a few meetings with the board, is an official modification of the subdivision to reduce the road construction requirements. So what we're proposing now is to leave the road the way it is, 12 feet of pavement, basically from the driveway split, um, all the way up, um, to the access to lot 1B, which is the lot that, um, the applicants own. That's a reduction from, I believe, the 14 or 16 feet of pavement, depending on which construction drawing, uh, was in the original approval. And the other road construction requirements, uh, that we're asking for is to maintain a cleared width of the travel way of 14 feet, uh, which involves a removal of trees, um, and the construction of a drainage swale or, uh, at the beginning of the road, because that's the low point of the road. So I've prepared, uh, construction drawings, uh, as part of the modification of showing the details of, of how that drainage, uh, area is to be constructed, um, as well as identifying the, the three trees that are required to be removed. As of this morning, um, the three trees are gone and the drainage swale has been constructed, um, with some, one modification, um, from the plans that you have before you, and that is, we proposed a eight-foot by eight-foot grass, um, infiltration, uh, swale at the, at the forbay and, and, uh, due to the, and after constru, uh, consulting with the, the contractor, we, we both agree that it'd be very difficult to get grass to grow there with the thick canopy. Um, there's very mature trees all through that area. So rather than, uh, loaming and seeding that and hoping for the best, uh, we decided to, uh, top that area with pea stone. So in effect, uh, it, it performs the same function and it gives an initial, initial, area where, uh, road debris can be trapped before getting into the infiltration area. So, uh, with these, if the planning board is so inclined to approve these modifications, uh, obviously it will require modification of, of the statement of conditions and the covenant. Originally, um, the statement of conditions said that the, the road had to be constructed in its entirety before the lot could be released, uh, for sale. We're proposing modifying the, the statement of conditions, um, slightly different than what, what was submitted, uh, to the board in the application. Now that the road improvements have been constructed, um, we feel that there's no longer requirement to have a covenant that the lot cannot be sold. So at this point, we'd like the statement of conditions to allow the lot to be sold, uh, obviously upon submission of an ASB plan. And then the covenant would be modified to say that the lot could not be built upon until such time as the owner of the lot presented to the planning board some type of assurance that the road would be repaired after construction is complete, whether it's a bond or, um, well, we're proposing a bond. So whoever buys a lot before they can get a building permit has to come back to the planning board, present a cost estimate, and, uh, present the, the, the board with a bond, um, to ensure that the road will be repaired. I've also added to the construction drawings, uh, what would be required for road construction. So I give a typical section through the roadway, and that would be if, if any digging had to go on, it'd be performed within the roadway, such as trenching for a water service or, or whatever type of public utility, the road would be put back, um, where the cut is made to the specifications shown on the plan. At the finish of construction of the dwelling, um, we would then propose that, uh, um, the entire road, uh, be topped with, uh, inch and a half of, uh, uh, top coat. And then the bond would be, would be released back to the, the developer. Hopefully that makes sense, uh, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Why don't I, uh, have Charlene just summarize her review comments and then we can get into the board questions, uh?
Me? I'm not a troublemaker.
No, um, excuse me. Christine?
I thought so.
I'm looking, I'm looking at you, but I meant this person here.
He does it every time.
I do that.
So this one is similar to the, to the previous, um, modification that we had just seen, only there is nothing changing as far as the actual size of the lots in this particular case. The engineer has, um, can, has suggested adding two items to the covenant, the existing covenant, and then proposing a statement of conditions with three items total. So this would be another one where maybe we would be, this one we'd be, actually be replacing because it has been record, recorded. My questions, though, were, uh, just, just so we're clear, we're also doing the bond in this particular case, so there was a bond, um, a bond A and a bond B, so I, I think we just need to state on the, uh, for the record exactly what those two things are, just so it's clear to everybody, because one will be with the, with the lot that's going to be sold and one will not. The other item that we had, um, yeah, I think that that's the biggest thing. And then, um, one of the things that was brought up by the fire chief was about the ladder truck access, so I think we also just need to make clear to everybody, the 14-foot clearance is something that has gone on long-term. We're going to discuss with him and the board going forward, um, about maybe increasing that to meet the subdivision regulations, but that does not matter at this time. We're going to keep it the way it is, the way everybody's discussed it, but since he's brought it up now with a couple of other reviews, it's somewhat concerning to us, so we want to keep, make that fairly, uh, you know, we want to make sure we're consistent on that. No other departments had any real issues. The DPW director did say that the, um, the sewer install that everybody's referring to, that will happen at some point. There is not a designated time or date for this one, so everybody should keep that in mind as well, um, because this could stay like, like this for a number of years, you know, as a partial roadway build. I guess those are, those are probably the biggest things. The end of the, um, of the, uh, of the review staff report speaks to some recommended conditions. Obviously you can, you know, change, modify those, add to them, but this is a starting point. And again, I worked from your standard regulations, the way that they've been developed over the past few years. So those are the biggest things with this one.
Okay, now we'll go to, uh, board comments and questions. I'll start down with you, Bob Dubas.
All right. I understand the fire, I can direct, deal with the fire chief. This road was put in before we had a hook and ladder.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I don't believe a hook and ladder will make it up there even if the road was 16 feet.
Right.
Because getting out of there is a problem.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the, we have adequacy in the smaller fire trucks.
Mm-hmm.
There's no fire hydrant up there for them to attach to. Uh, it's been like that for a long time. I, I think that maybe after they put the sewer in, they might consider widening. It is a private road. It is adequate for what's there, and it is, as long as it has the 14 for a truck to get up there. My trucks do get up there, so I know that, uh, a regular fire truck can get up there. A ladder truck needs the width on its stabilizers. It's, it's not a good spot for it. I'd hate to disagree with him because he's, he, he's a nice guy and he knows what he's doing, but in this instance, I think we, a waiver would suffice. And the road, eventually, it's a private road, so when the person does build on that lot and does a skim coat on it, that that road is still going to be maintained by the people that live there.
Live there.
Yeah. The only, I do have one thing, David, though. When you drive in at the point of the island, the stump is this high. I would like it ground down. I don't want it taken out because it'll ruin it, but at least grind down because I think that a car will, will, or a truck would drive over that with the tree not being there. And I don't want that to hold up anything.
Yeah.
I just think it might be a necessary evil at some point to just grind it down, uh-
We don't want you to spill your coffee when you hit it with a snowboard.
Listen, I, I do like the ladies that live in that neighborhood, but unfortunately, unless they need my help, I, I probably see them once every two or three years and, uh, and, uh, and I, they're good people, and the whole neighborhood is a good neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
But either that or fill it with some dense grade or something so that if, if a car did run over it, that they wouldn't, they wouldn't take a tire out. That's my only comment.
Okay, thank you, Frank. You have comments or questions?
I don't have any questions.
Uh, Charlene? Charlene this time.
Thank you. I get called all kinds of names, I'm used to it. Um, I, what David explained, I, I absolutely have no issue with. Once again, I would feel more comfortable having the final revised documents before I'd be comfortable, um, you know, finalizing-
Right.
And voting on this.
Mm-hmm.
And at the same time, also, uh, getting the request for the release of the covenant that actually got recorded.
You're right. It did get recorded in this one, yeah.
It did, and I don't think there was a statement of conditions.
There was, but it didn't get recorded.
Okay, so we just need to deal with that.
Right.
So, yeah, I have no problem with what was discussed at all, but I, I'd like to see everything completely-
I think it's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
Bob?
I, I just, I thought they, you said that you only want one bond because the road is already finished, so there is only one bond.
The requ, yeah, yeah, I can- No, the other bond was for the, um, for the other lot, so that when they do their construction and they're-
Yeah, so they're-
They're taking everything up, up the road, and that's where the access is for that lot. That's the reason for the concern associated with that and why we, we were asking for a separate bond for that.
Let me clarify.
Yeah.
When we were here the last time, uh, we talked about two bonds.
Right.
I prepared the application for two bonds. The applicants asked me, is there any reason why, at that meeting, the applicants asked me if there's any reason why they can't go ahead and do the work? And I asked the board, we can still operate under the original approval, do the road improvements.
Right.
So they went ahead and, we went into conservation, got approval to do the work within their jurisdiction, and the work was done. So, since I filed this application. So the first bond, bond A, is not required now.
Okay.
We believe it's not required now because the work is done.
Good clarification, you're right.
So, looks like we're coming back, obviously. Um, so when we come back, we'll have an ASB plan, so the, so that is part of the public record and as documentation that, um, the lot can be sold.
Right.
And upon posting of, with the one bond now, um-
Yeah.
We'll get a building permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That, that's what I understand, too. Okay. Uh, Warren, you have any questions, comments?
Not questions, I'm very much in favor of everything, but I would like just someone to confirm what I believe my understanding is of a reasonably complicated-
Yeah.
-process here.
Yeah.
And that is that the covenant that will require repair of the road is going to be, um, somewhat in limbo- somewhat in limbo because it will be, the consensus of the board, that that can be, the repair can be delayed until after the sewer is put in.
No, no, nothing to do with the sewer.
That is not correct. So there's no covenant at all in terms of repairing the road that isn't to be done now?
Now, that's correct.
Correct, all right, I'm fine, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Catherine?
First of all, I just want to say I agree with Charlene. I feel better having all the documents complete in front of us. I just want to circle back on the comments of the fire chief. Is he saying it's all right, or is he saying it's not all right? I just want to be abundantly clear.
His, his email, which was in your package, says, he's just stating the fact of that right now it is one of those non-accessible roads for his ladder truck. He's not saying whether.
And we're, we're making a judgment on our side that the ladder truck will not be needed for, that that's okay, that it's not accessible.
No, no, you're not making that determination.
No, no.
So then I, all right, so then.
He's just pointing out, and maybe it's something that we need to consider going forward.
I think it is. Yeah, if it's not full approval from the fire chief, I think it is something we need to consider.
And again, that's, that's, this subdivision was approved back in 2004. Now, they're coming for this modification just to deal with this one thing, to go back and readjust all conditions associated with that. Shouldn't really apply to this, to this particular one because it never was, it was previously approved. So I think that's the reason why we're coming up with this modified approach that we worked out with, with David and his client. Does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
The thing is that this, this subdivision, almost you'd have to put a highway in there for the ladder truck to go up and down it.
Right.
A regular, two regular fire trucks or three regular fire trucks can go up there.
Right.
Okay, and there's only, there's only four, I think, four houses up there, because the ladder truck would, would go to the sisters here from 28.
Yeah.
So, so we think there's adequate, adequate fire protection.
That's what we're saying.
That's right.
I want to hear the fire chief say that.
Well, he didn't say, it wasn't, he's just saying that when we look at sub, new subdivisions, or we have to, we have to keep in mind that he'd like his ladder truck to go up there. I mean, I can, I can spit out almost 50 places where it can't go.
Where it can't, right, existing today, yeah.
I have to agree that we should have the fire chief to say whether this is okay or not.
Yeah, just that simple. Is it okay or not okay?
Well, we're, we're planning to continue this. We can, we can get that clarification between now and that next meeting.
That's all he's saying.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any, any other comments, questions of the applicant? Okay, then let's continue with our procedures in here. Are there any public statements in favor of the application? I see none. There's no correspondence, or is there correspondence? Public statements opposing the application? I see, oh, okay. Could you please come up and state your name for the record?
Hello, my name's Janice Payne. I live at 15 Evergreen Lane. I have lived at 13 Evergreen Lane. I have also spent time in every single house in that neighborhood. We have been residents of that neighborhood since 1955. We are aware of every single house, how it was built, who built it, why it was built, and we have also witnessed a fire truck going up Evergreen Lane to number 36 Evergreen Lane when a lightning struck the house and the lines. It was not a ladder truck, it was a regular-sized fire truck. We are also the residents who had the road paved twice. My concern is, we're not paying for the road to be paved again. If it's done for sewer, that's one thing, but when this lot is sold, there is no reason why the rest of the neighbors on Evergreen Lane should pay for that road to be paved. And that is my concern.
That is the process that we're going through here, and the, we are requiring the, whoever the owner is of, and developer of that lot that's being split off in here, to be the one who actually does this work.
We just want to make sure that that is clearly in writing, in print, locked in.
And, and that's why we want to actually see all this in writing. We'll, we'll continue this to our, the next available meeting, and we'll review all of those conditions, and I would recommend that you attend that meeting.
Absolutely. We are wholeheartedly invested in this community, not only financially, but most importantly, spiritually and emotionally. We grew up as children, and this was a farm originally.
Right.
And it was subdivided by the farmer and his wife, and we were fortunate enough to be part of that division initially in the 50s. And we just want to preserve the goodness of this community. It's not a typical subdivision that you see now done, and trees removed and house after house. This is a very quiet, woodsy, wonderful community of people, all good neighbors, and we work together, but I'm just here to voice how we feel about it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Yes, sir, if you could come up and state your name for the record? Sir, if you could direct your comments to, to the chair and to the board?
Yes. John Bendis, 120 Island View Lane. We abut these properties from, from the Island View side. I don't think we really have a concern here, it's more of a question. When we walk through there, the road coming in has a very deep falloff. The question is, do these modifications require a lot of fill to be brought in, which might encroach on the, what we call the wetlands?
David, if you could answer that, I, I could, but I'd rather have you respond to that.
At this point, we're not proposing any modifications that require any cutting or filling of the road. The blessing of the board, we're going to keep the road at the existing width, and simply at the end of construction of the one single-family dwelling that will be built, the road will be repaved to the 12-feet width that it is now.
It does, thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments?
The sale of the lot, I assume that lot would be subject to all those setbacks and the normal restrictions against wetland.
Yeah, that, that would have to comply with zoning, and that, that would be the zoning enforcement officer or billing commissioner who'd be deciding that part.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other comments, then if we would like to continue this, I think, to, can we do this two weeks and to the 23rd of June?
I can get you an ASBIL plan next week and the draft documents.
I move that we continue this public hearing to June 23rd, no earlier than 5:00 p.m.
Second. All right, and do a roll call vote. Catherine Hopper?
I approve.
Warren Chain?
Approve.
Wershafter?
Approve.
Charlene Greenhall?
Approve.
Frank Shear?
Approve.
Bob Dubus?
Dubus, approve.
Art Spru, I approve.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, next item on the agenda is Penrose LLC presentation on Meeting House Roads project development. If you could introduce yourself and your team members, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Rio Seketti. I'm a developer with Penrose. We're presenting a development plan, a schematic development plan for Zero Meeting House. It's a 42-unit residential rental project. It's one of two sites in Chatham that, where Penrose was selected as developer to build affordable and workforce housing within the town, the other one being 1533 Main Street. They were both selected in 2024. We entered into a land development agreement with the town for this site this past winter. So our goal tonight is to give the board an overview of the project. We're not looking for any votes or approvals. We're here to solicit your feedback so we can progress the design and improve upon the design. We understand the importance of this site for housing and that, of course, there's always a delicate balance between the need for housing in this community and, and the density of the housing being built. So we want this development to be a development that the town is, or will be proud of. So the development team is, well, it's the same development team that we had at Main Street. I believe we came and presented 1533 Main Street to you all back in January, I believe. I'll just quickly go through it again. Penrose, we're a national developer with a New England office, which has a strong presence on the Cape with projects in Eastham and Orleans and Wareham. I know Wareham's not the Cape, it's a gateway to the Cape. So we also have the same design team, and this is what I've been calling our, our all-star team. We have Horsley Witten as a civil engineer, and from Horsley Witten, we have Joe Henderson here with me tonight. The architect is Union Studio, and we have, I believe we have Haley Behr online.
She's, I see someone nodding, yes.
Okay, great. And the landscape architect is Crowley Cotrell, and I believe we have Meech Crowley online as well.
Yes, I see someone waving, so.
And another head nod. Great, perfect. Our approach on this development proposal is very similar, it was the same approach we took to both sites. We, it's really grounded in four key principles. It's embracing the architectural context of Chatham and the aesthetics of Chatham when we design the buildings. It's then engaging with stakeholders to solicit feedback, such as what we're doing tonight, to improve upon the, the development proposal before it eventually gets submitted as a comprehensive permit, which is the plan for this development. A shared vision, this is alluded to before, a development that the town can be proud of, and accountability going forward to, that will deliver on the promises we made during the RFP process and what we agreed to in the land disposition agreement with the town. So as an example of some of the outreach that we've done prior to coming here tonight, we've met with different town departments and staff, and, and that has helped us, you know, make changes from the design where we initially came in with a design for the RFP, and that was before reaching out to the fire department, DPW, conservation, all these groups, which we've since met with, including other community groups, such as the South Chatham Village Association. Okay, from here, I would like to hand it over to Haley with Union Studio to give a little background on her firm and, and then also to get into the drawings and the site plan.
Can you hear me?
Haley, are, are you there?
I'm here, are you able to hear me?
Yes. Go, go ahead.
So my name is Haley Behr with Union Studio, I'm one of the architects for this project along with Paul Adaman. Union Studio is a mission-driven architecture firm, our mission being to use the power of design to enrich lives and strengthen communities. Do we have the presentation still up? Oh, there we go, perfect.
And Haley, please let me know when you'd like me to move to the next slide.
Yeah, that's perfect. So this mission has led us to doing a lot of affordable housing work, and we've really developed a real expertise with this type of work as well. We've worked with the Cape Cod Commission to come up with specific strategies for communities regarding the housing crisis on the Cape. You see the communities we've worked with listed there, and we've also published a booklet on the missing middle housing on Cape Cod, which explores a range of housing typologies. And these different housing typologies produce a greater density of housing in a way that's culturally or contextually appropriate. If you could go to the next slide. So through this work, we found that these housing typologies are actually very prevalent on Cape Cod and very contextually appropriate, though you may not realize that they are multifamily housing units from looking at them from the exterior. You want to go to the next slide? So this is the site plan for this project. You can see we have one main access drive off of Meeting House Road, which leads to a central drive aisle loop. This project features eight buildings of various building types, head-end parking and an internal network of sidewalks that connect to the Old Colony Rail Trail and Twining Road, or the Twining Fields to the west of our site. And this is the site plan that was presented as part of our RFP. If we go to the next slide, we've outlined some of the changes that have occurred based on feedback from that initial response to the RFP, so those would be repositioning the taller buildings so that they are further away from abutting neighbors. We've also identified potential roof locations for solar panels, and we redesigned the management office. Initially, that was a management and community center, or not community center, community room. We've eliminated that, the amenity aspect, so now it will just be a management office and a maintenance area. Next slide. So this is the revised site plan that incorporates those changes. The overall building count, parking count, and unit count have all remained the same. Next slide. So this diagram just illustrates the roof lines that we're anticipating for this project, so the, the ones highlighted in blue, those ridge lines will be at or below 30 feet, and the red ridge lines will be at, we're estimating around 35 feet, if not lower. The building height definition depends on grading, so we don't have exact heights at this point in time. Next slide. And then this diagram is illustrating where we anticipate solar panels being located. You can see those ideal locations for solar panels highlighted in yellow, and then less ideal but still feasible would be in the lighter yellow. So we are utilizing three building types for this project of various scales. We found it was important that each of the building types We found it was important that each of the building types features a front-entry porch as well as exterior front doors for every single unit. In our experience, that really helps to foster community and give residents a sense of belonging and a sense of ownership. We're also using a traditional Chatham-appropriate material palette for all three building types. So, that includes sloped asphalt shingle roofing, fiber cement lap siding, double-hung windows with a divided light pattern, and trim details throughout. Next slide. So, this is building type A. I'll run through the floor plans very quickly. This is a townhouse configuration. So, you can see we've got three two-bed units in this building type, and you can see there the front-entry porch, and then we've located storage units and utility space at the rear. Next slide. And this is building type B. So, in this unit type, we have two two-bed units that are located at the ground floor. These will be accessible units. Again, you see the front-entry porch with a front door to each unit. Two, well, four units will go up the stairs and be accessed, or provide access to the second store where we have four one-bed units. You can see we have storage stalls for all six units in this building on the west side of the plan there, and then utility space to access from the rear. And then building type C. It's a similar strategy as building type B, but we're accommodating larger units, and we do that by providing a half-story on the third floor, a third half-story. So, we've got on the ground floor, these will be our accessible units. We have a two-bed and a three-bed unit, and then stacked above, we have two two-beds, no, sorry, two one-beds and two two-beds. And again, you see a storage stall for each of the six units and utility space in the rear. And I think that's it for me. I'm going to hand off to Joe now.
Hello, good evening. Joe Henderson, Horsley Witten Group. We're a civil engineering firm out of Sandwich. And I'm going to give just a quick overview of some of the site engineering aspects of the project. I just wanted to point out first the site in general. The topography is pretty dramatic. There's a high point kind of up in the northwest portion. Slope's pretty steeply down into a fairly large depression here in the southeast area of the site. That area actually does capture a little bit of runoff from the road. So, grading here is fairly challenging. We expect that we may need some retaining walls, and you can see in the schematic, there are some retaining walls shown throughout the site. We also are working with the town on securing a site readiness grant to help with the access into the site from Meeting House. So, the plan is to keep a lot of this existing vegetation, as is, along the Meeting House side, and focus the development, as we've shown here, on the kind of the western portion of the site, where it's a little bit flatter. The, as I think Haley had mentioned, we are proposing a connection out to the twine field. We have connections down to the bike path here. We're proposing to maintain all the grades within the site to be visitable. All the units will be visitable. We would also have, you know, assortment of handicap units there, too. Haley pointed out also the parking. The parking is just standard nine-by-18 spaces, a mixture of parallel and 90-degree spaces. We are, we're proposing a low point in this area of the site where we'd capture most of the drainage. We'll also be capturing some of the drainage, obviously, before it leaves the site. The roadway widths are all going to be 24 feet wide. We've had some initial discussions with the fire department, and we have a software that we can drive the ladder truck throughout the site to ensure that they can have proper circulation there, so we've started vetting that piece of it. The stormwater management system is, we use a GSI, green infrastructure, approach. So, we'd be using like tree trenches and bio-retention systems, and then overflow into some of these larger blue rectangles, which would be underground chambers. And our goal would be to minimize that by taking advantage of some of that existing depression area and storage that's within the project site. So, all the stormwater would be managed on the project site. We would, as part of our submission, we would have a stormwater report that outlines, you know, meeting the stormwater management policy of the state. The sewer is available within Meeting House. There's a sewer stub that was provided when they installed the gravity main, so we'd be proposing to connect to that. Because of the topography of the site, we expect to be able to just flow by gravity from the buildings out into the street. And what we would probably do is, I believe the stub is somewhere in this area, so we would probably drop a sewer manhole at that stub and then connect into the main. But again, that, we'd have to still, you know, vet that with the DPW director to make sure he's on board. Water, there is water available in Meeting House. We are planning an internally-looped water main, so we would tie in off Meeting House and then loop the water within the project with, of course, you know, hydrants proposed where appropriately. So, I think that's everything I was going to go over. I believe Meech is going to talk a little bit about landscape.
Thanks, Joe. Before I turn it over to Meech, I just want to stress again how difficult the site is to build on. You can see approximately 50% of the site is unusable because of such of the steep grade to get from the back end of the property to Meeting House. And that's why we're only showing one accessway. This is the most feasible way to get some type of land bridge or some type of bridge over the deepest, the lowest point of the property and bring it up to one of the higher grades that are the buildable grades. I'd also like to note that this right here coming through is an existing old road currently being used as a driveway by several of the neighbors. And this would be anticipated to be, as currently designed, would need to be cut off. So, we've been in discussions with two of the neighbors, one of whom is here tonight, about getting new access from their properties to Meeting House Road as well. That's not currently shown on this plan. This is just our site strictly. But we've also been working on some engineering plans to improve access for the other neighbors who are currently using this to be able to get one direct access to Meeting House, whether they can take a left or a right. Okay, Meech, I will turn it over to you for the landscape.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Crowley. You can hear everyone calling me Meech. But I am from, principal from Crowley Cotrell, landscape architects. We're a firm based in Boston, but we do a lot of work on the Cape with affordable housing as well as a lot of residential work down there. So, we spend quite a bit of time down on the Cape. For the site plan, you have heard from everyone how sort of tricky the site is and unusable. But I find that the part that's unusable, which is, or unbuildable, is actually the fantastic, most fantastic part of the site. It's this really cool deep ravine. If I were a kid living here, it would be my favorite place to run around and explore in. So, we're really preserving that, and that helps us keep all of those existing trees in that zone between Meeting House Road and where this small development will be. Each, we also then have, where Haley pointed out, where there's an office and management space outside. That is where we have sort of an area for pergola, where you could do grilling, and it's a connection, right, to Twine Field. So, this little neighborhood is really connected to some pretty amazing topography and open fields as well as forest ravines. And so, we've really tucked these in to that, to that kind of character, that landscape classic character of Cape Cod. So, we want to maintain that by having little paths that go to each of the houses that have then planting. We're proposing a small playground that's more like natural play. And we have also are proposing some community gardens on the north side of the site, so they're south-facing. And we are trying to put as many trees back in as well as some shrubs. If you go to the next slide, it shows some of the trees and shrubs and ground covers. Right now, there are existing oaks and existing ground covers that are included in here with wintergreen as well as some sheep laurel. And then we would, we would be adding some evergreens, some American holly, and some illex glabra, which is lower, and some mountain laurel so that it can help with any screening of adjacencies as well as then other shrubs and ground covers that provide year-round interest as well, you know, for people to enjoy, but as well as birds and other animals to enjoy. So, we hope that this is a, once all these things grow in, that you really do feel that you're back in sort of the, not fully in the wooded area because we want some open light in there, but that you are really nestled in between the twine field and this cool ravine in there. So, we're excited about this site and to work with it. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the presentation we have for you tonight. Before we go into questions, I just want to reemphasize that our approach here has been mindful of scale. We've been proposing smaller townhome-style buildings on the site, even though it's a much more cramped site because of the grading that makes half the site really unbuildable. We have the smaller townhome-style buildings broken up instead of larger, one or two larger apartment buildings. We know it's a sensitive site, and we appreciate the board members' perspectives. Thank you. So, open for any questions you may have.
Okay, why don't we begin with Catherine?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I do have a few questions. That'll just help me understand what you're doing on the site a little better. I think you mentioned three building types, and I'm looking here at your slide or your picture that shows the roof heights. And she mentioned that the lines in blue are 30 feet or under, the lines in red are above 30 feet. And I'm just wondering if you could go through that slide and tell me, is it building type A, type B, or type C? Or did you just use type B and type C on this plan? And what are the lengths of the buildings? And then what are the roof heights? But, you know, we'll go that the blue is 30 feet and the red is 35 feet, something like that. But I just want to understand what are the building types and what are the length of each building? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Haley, would you be able to field this?
Yeah, of course. So, building type C is the only type that's going to have a ridge line above 30 feet. And building type C is the only one with the red highlighted if we go to the elevation. Yep.
Okay, so could you, could you go back to the visuals of the building types? And with the pointer, point to building type C. I just want to put this together visually so we can. So, which is building C?
That one in yellow at the bottom there.
That's right here.
We're showing two elevations of building type C. Yep.
So, those are, so the bottom two elevations are both building type C. Okay.
Yeah, we're just showing both of the entry elevations.
Okay, and what is the length of the front elevation in building type C?
I don't have that number in front of me. We can say around 100 feet.
100 feet. Okay. And then building type A, can you point to that and tell us the length of that?
Yeah, again, I don't have the number in front of me. I don't know if it's included in our floor plan. We might include overall dimensions. But yeah, building type A is the one in blue.
Is the one in blue? So, that's the upper left, yes?
Yeah, that's the townhouse style.
Okay, and we don't know the length. And then is that building type B? In the brown, sort of?
Yes.
And we don't know the length of that one?
It is, it does look like it's included on the plans if we want to flip to those slides to see the overall dimensions. It looks like, okay, it's 68 for building type B is the overall length.
And do you have the overall length for building type C again?
Building type C, 70 feet is the overall length.
70, and building A?
You know, I can't quite make it out on my PDF. It's not loading correctly for some reason.
Okay, then if you wouldn't mind flipping back to the slide with the roof heights, and if you wouldn't mind just going through what's building A, what's building B, what's building C? And did you say that it's building type B is the only one where there's, part of the roof is above 30? Is that correct?
It's building type C where there's one ridge line that will be above 30 feet. So, if we want to start at the, at the top left and go around counterclockwise, so this will be building type B. So, this is the building with the management space adjoined. One down, this will be a building type C. And then same for the next two, if we keep going around counterclockwise. Yep, building type C. And then there's two smaller ones. Those are both going to be building type A.
Okay.
And then the two remaining, yep, that one is building type C, and again, building type C.
Okay, great. I just wanted to get a better idea of the size, the massing, and how they're laid out on the site. And I think the only other question I had, maybe at some point, it'd be lovely if we could see a visual of this. I mean, it's not actually a streetscape because it's quite a bit back from Meeting House Road, but if we could see what the visual will be like from Meeting House Road. If, at some point, if we could see that, that would be great. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Warren, any comments, questions?
Of course. First, thank you for coming. I think that's very helpful to us, hopefully to you as well. In general, I would say that they have received a copy of the letter that we sent regarding the Main Street proposal.
Yes, the ZBA read it into the record last week as well.
It's a totally different site, understand it. But many of the concerns that are addressed in that letter, I think, are worth considering in this site as well, unless topography or whatever means that, you know, takes them off the table. But, so I'd encourage you to review that letter to see what might be relevant for this site. You already mentioned the one lane or one access road out to Route 137. That is a fairly major road that increases in volume of traffic regularly. And I would say, you know, a traffic study to talk about how wide that needs to be and left turn. that needs to be and left turn lanes, uh, uh, the, the turns, uh, turn radius and so on, um, I think would be of great interest, uh, to have, you know, the experts, um, review that when there's a, a final proposal. Um, the, um, you've mentioned too that there isn't a butter or butters up to the north, um, and have talked about, um, discussions in terms of providing access essentially to those houses. Um, hopefully that, um, will continue. Um, and that comments from those butters, um, positive, negative, or neutral, uh, might be, um, of interest, uh, to include in your proposal, given that we know that there's going to be a major change to, to them. Hopefully, to me, it looks like it might be a major improvement. Um, but, uh, that would be a question that I would have. Um, a couple of the comments that are in the, um, the proposal or the comment letter about the Main Street site are, I think are maybe worth emphasizing here. One is that just looking at the proposed outline there, um, considering having a one-lane flow of traffic on the interior, um, rectangle there might be, uh, worth considering. Uh, that gets several of the kids running across the streets, uh, to be looking in the one direction as opposed to both. Um, where there are sidewalks, um, that would, uh, have, uh, allow you to cross from one side to the other, I think those ought to be clearly designated. And they're perhaps, uh, considering the use of speed tables, um, not speed bumps, but in there just to make sure that, um, that the speed of traffic in there is kept to an absolute minimum. Um, same as really at the, uh, the Main Street site. Um, I think the 30-foot height limit is going to be an issue. It's an issue for me certainly. Um, and as is the limiting, um, restricting the height to two and one-half stories, um, on the buildings, um, is also important to me. Um, and, um, let's see. Um, parking requirements is going to be another issue that comes up. Um, and, um, would consider, um, that you take a look at our comments in the letter to the, uh, board. I don't see any reason yet to see that our, uh, my feelings would be any different for this site than for, uh, the Main Street site. Um, the, um, I think it's also worth considering giving the challenges to topographically of the site to consider, um, carefully where you're going to, uh, cite dumpsters for trash removal, uh, sites for snow removal, um, or perhaps other types of, um, service vehicles that would need access to this site based on the season, be it landscapers and so on, uh, just to make sure that the designs accommodate what is likely to be required. Um, stormwater management, I think you've already highlighted as a, as a major, uh, element of your design process. So I would only, uh, emphasize that that is going to be of great interest, given the topography of this. Um, I think that the, um, consideration should be given too as to whether fencing of any kind, probably solid fencing, would be appropriate, uh, perhaps along where there are butters because the, um, the construction here will be quite close to the property line. Um, I haven't been out to the site and not sure I could even tell, uh, from the site since it's probably not clearly staked and so on. But, um, that, and then also, um, you'll have the Cape Cod rail trail there, uh, and whether or not, um, visibility of the buildings from the rail trail or of the rail trail from the buildings might, um, might well be enhanced, um, or restricted in a way that would improve, um, both the, um, the people living there as well as those on the trail. Um, the, um, and pretty much that, those are the things that popped out to me that might be worth considering. But I think it's a, a very good project and I really much appreciate your, um, giving us a chance to look at it. Thank you.
Bob Rorschach there?
Yeah, I, I have many of the same comments as Warren, except I'm not quite sure. I would say that it's going to be good for the butters. Um, I guess my first impression is if I was a 10-year-old kid, am I going to have to play in the street to play any games? Because you just don't have the, uh, playground area that you have in the other one. And, um, I, I'm going to be in the street kicking the soccer ball or, or playing, you know, other games because there's just no place. I mean, I really, I, I agree that the outdoors is great, but that's just not where every kid is. And they're going to want to play baseball. They're going to want to throw the baseball. They're going to want to kick a soccer ball. And there's just no place. So I, I, it starts off to me as crowded, uh, to begin with. You throw some kids into this mix and it just really seems like it's got too many people here. Uh, I, I appreciate that we want to have, um, affordable housing, but I don't know that we have to cram so many into a space just because it's the only one available right now. Um, to me, it, it just, you know, I, I just would like to see some of the amenities that were at the other site. Um, and I, I don't. And I, I, again, I don't know where the dumpsters are. Is there a dumpster in each of these or is this the same? Those are the dumpsters? So if I'm down here in the south, southern, uh, buildings, I've got to haul all my trash up there? That's just not, I, again, that's just not going to work. Um, especially if I'm in a wheelchair. So, uh, I, I think we need a little bit more thought about, uh, placement of dumpsters. Uh, I'm a little concerned that you're building up right against what is conservation area on the, on the western side. Uh, I, I don't know if there's even enough setback. I don't know what kind of protection there will be for that area. Uh, having the houses that close to, to that, um, natural area, I want to make sure that at least we're not getting runoff, that we're protecting those areas. And having access to them is fine, but, uh, there, there will be a lot more foot traffic in those areas. And I'm not sure that they're, they have the, uh, capacity to handle that much. So there's a lot of questions here about why, why you've, uh, you know, jammed this into this area here that I have concerns about. I mean, I won't, I, I, I guess, you know, I could keep going to solar. I, I surely want solar. I would like to have a better indication of how that's going to be put there. Who's going to, who's going to own it? Who's going to get the benefits of it? Um, if it's a community solar project, that would be, that own, uh, with, with people in the, uh, who live there, having the, uh, benefits of a community solar project, that would be something that we should, we could work, uh, with. The Energy Committee would be happy to work with you and ZVAC would be happy to try and figure out how we can make that happen. Um, I, I, I don't, uh, that, that access that you're cutting off to the, to the two butters is, is really problematic to me that, uh, that is, that is, uh, uh, your commitment to having another way for them to get their, their, um, homes is, is more than just a, I, I think it actually has to be in the, in the plan and shown in the plan for, for, for me to, to approve this because that's what we would be doing. If you're cutting off someone's means of getting to their home, you need to provide in the plan exactly how that is going to be corrected, not, not just tell us that you're going to take care of it later because I, I don't have any assurance that that's going to be taking place. I think that's all for now.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Charlene?
I, I agree that, um, there should be multiple dumpster locations, um, just for convenience sake. Um, I agree a little bit with, with the areas, more areas in the site for children to play. However, when I was growing up, if I lived anywhere near Twine Field and that was available to me, man, my parents would be ringing the old cowbell to get me to come home because that's where I'd be playing or down in the, the hole. You know, each kid would have a fort somewhere. That's, that's how I grew up. Um, I actually like this plan. I have absolutely no problem with the height of some of the buildings. I know, I, my, I, shut up, Bobby. Um, I know that, that fellow members don't agree with me on that. But in order to have housing that's affordable and attainable, you need to be able to think outside the box. And you've done that. It needs to be, people need to be able to have a safe place to live. And if it means having five more feet height-wise in a building that quite frankly, you know, you're not going to see from, some of the butters will see it, I will grant you that, but from, uh, Meeting House Road, um, and even from the, the conservation next door, which was a working, um, fishing, farming place. Um, I, I don't think it's too dense. I think you've been creative and cautious of not going into the lowland. You know, you say it's unbuildable. Virtually nothing is unbuildable, but I think you're being smart in keeping that front easterly part of the property as natural as can be. And, um, I just, I, I don't share some of the, the concerns of, of, um, the other board members. But, um, I think this is a thoughtful plan. Um, I like the building designs. Um, I, I, I think you've done a very good job here. And I commend you and thank you for coming in.
Um, first of all, thank you for taking on a very difficult site. I, I know this was not an easy project. Um, I, I, as to the height, um, we have a history in, in Chatham as now I'm certain you know about 30 feet. Uh, but, uh, I, I also think that, uh, we have to be flexible on, on, on height. Um, particularly in, in this lot, I, I don't know whether you've done it, but have you done a sightline from Meeting House Road yet to the buildings? Okay.
No.
I, I, my guess is you're not going to see any of the buildings, uh, but we need to confirm that. Um, and I think that that would be very important in terms of height. You know, if it, people can't see it, it's going to be hard for people to have too much objection. Um, as to density, um, we really need this in, in Chatham. We, we, we need missing metal rental housing. We have virtually no year-round rental housing. Um, I just heard recently that the entering kindergarten class in our school is five. Um, so I'm, I'm very much in favor of the density. I, I, I don't think it's too dense. Um, I grew up in Brooklyn and
Talk about dense.
There were, there were, I, I couldn't go outside and, and play soccer or hit a baseball. What, what we'd do is we, we would go to the park or we would go to the schoolyard. Um, and it was fine. You know, I, I met up with all the other kids there. So I, I, I don't have a real problem. I, I think you've, if we had more land, if we had more to work with, yes, it would be nice to have a larger area for recreation. But, um, I certainly agree that the, um, uh, whatever solution we come up with or you come up with, uh, for access for the, uh, butters should be shown. And we ought to see that as part of the, uh, process. Um, let's see. Um, I think it's, it shouldn't spend a lot of time repeating the, the kind of comments that are already in our letter for the other development. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure they're all pertinent to this development, but I think a lot of them are. So, uh, I'm sure you, I'm sure you've read that letter. So I won't repeat all, everything in there. Um, and I guess that's it.
Bob?
Well, my first impression was that, the height, but like Charlene says, and we all have, we all know that a quarter of this town is over 30 feet high. Uh, matter of fact, right across the street, I'm going to tell you, the church has got to be over 30 feet high. So what, what, in reality, do you want a few more people to have a house in a place that's, uh, pretty ac- acclimated to, to this project, especially being set back, the setback on Meeting House Road? I do, I do have concern for the neighbors in their driveway. Uh, I've worked for the neighbors down there, maintaining that a little bit. It's, it's pretty rude, but it, it is access for them and it gives them a way in and a way out that they didn't have if you take part of it away. I can see the children, kids, whatever, hanging out down in the, in the, uh, in the, in the hollow there. It'll be a great place for them. As far as the Twine Field, like Char- Charlene, we grew up in the, with the Twine Field. I mowed it every year for years for, uh, the elders. And it's a great place to run and romp and have a good time. That's what, that's to me what it's for. They want to make it a butterfly, a butterfly field. Well, let the kids go out there and chase butterflies. And the habitat out there is great. It's going to be, it's an awesome place for people to play. I do, uh, agree with the board that we, we need another dump, dumpster station. Uh, my parents had a place in Florida and they had a dumpster for each building. I don't expect that to happen here. Uh, but you're going to have a lot of trash. And I understand that when the truck comes in, it turns the corner and can back up, uh, for ease, but I'm sure that you can figure out another way to have a dumpster on the, on the, what would that be? The east, the east end?
South, south end.
South end? Thank you. Uh, but I am in favor of the project and I can get over the five feet to, to make it, uh, more comfortable for people, uh, considering, like you said, right across the street, there's a building that's 40 feet high or 50 feet high. And thank you for coming.
Uh, thank you. Um, I think, um, what I would like to start with first is, um, it's difficult for me, and I think many of our board members, uh, to give you, uh, more specific comments when we only see a sketch in front of us. And it's to such a scale that we can't even tell dimensions or anything associated with it. Um, we did provide more specific details to the, uh, Main Street site after we saw the, the drawings. Um, we will be requested to do the same thing here from the ZBA. Uh, if we have detailed plans in front of us or a little advanced to some degree that we can react to, um, in progression, that would help us, uh, to provide some feedback to you. Um, I understand that you do this elsewhere with some of your other communities. And that would be something that would be, um, I would welcome as from a standpoint of looking at a progress set, whether it's 25, 50%, whatever. Um, you're welcome to come back and, and share those with us. And we can provide, um, probably a preemptive comment before you get too far down the road. Um, so I would, I would encourage you to consider that. Um, let me go down my, I think the, I think that site access could be, uh, a bit of a challenge. Uh, the, the grades on this site are, are going to be challenged. And that means a lot of things aren't going to look as clean and neat as you have on a 2D drawing. As soon as you start to put this in three dimensions and you start dealing with slopes and, uh, what happens to that access point and how is that going to be safe from the standpoint of whether- from the standpoint of whether that's, I don't even know if that's a cut or a fill. I haven't been out to the site yet and I, you know, until I got this, I wasn't quite sure where this was.
Yeah, it'll be a fill.
Yeah.
Site in general is overall fill.
Yeah.
We're going to be need fill.
Yeah, so that, that means that there's, we've entertained this before with some other sites that came across very much like this access point.
Actually, I'll just clarify, the entrance is a fill, but in general, the site is a cut.
Yeah. So, but there's going to be safety precautions that you should be proposing and designing into that, that access point. I share the same thing with some of the other board members. I understand that there's a drive that existed there, but at the same time, you know, how do you go about dealing with all of that and include this as part of a solution as your proposal? That should be, I agree with some of the other board members, that that needs to be addressed before you propose one way or another and get buy-in from those abutters. They're the ones that are being impacted by this, so certainly would want to look into that issue. The other board members brought up some other components of this about the circulation, you know, one way around. Think about all that. One of my comments was you have a section in here that some of the parking spaces are like a piece off that's to the north there. Could you make those parking spaces impervious surface areas? So you reduce some of this down? I see a lot of impervious area here. I saw the plans for the detailed on Main Street and for the stormwater and they were significant. I'm not quite sure that that's something that is a benefit when you, when you do your approach that way. I would suggest you do some more consideration about how that needs to be done. We, our criteria for a site here for other sites is just twenty-five year storm event and I think that one was even designed for a higher criteria in that. I'm not quite sure that that needs to be. That's something for you to go back and look at. That, that has a significant effect on how much underground infrastructure that you need to put in. You have an excellent relief mechanism here as you've shown in your sketch as part of an overflow. That's, that's how you deal with some of those other issues when infiltration can't keep up with it because I understand that's not, depending on the intensity of a storm event, you can get, you can get overflow at situations. But you have excellent relief mechanism in here and I would encourage you to use that as much as you can to help mitigate some of this. I guess, you know, I think, you know, I'm back and forth on density. I think density should be encouraged, but at the same time, there is, you know, challenges when you, when you do shoehorn all of this in. I'm a strong advocate of actually crunching buildings in like this and having a larger buffer of landscaping or unused around on a property, which is what you're proposing here. So this, this is a plus. You can perhaps hide some of the heights of the buildings based, based on how you structure that and how these sit on the site. So that visual from 137, I think, would be a very important one. It could help in dealing with that whole aspect of it. But I think the big thing for me is, I'm a civil engineer and I like to take a look at detail stuff. So if you can get me that sooner, I would love it. I would be more than happy to, you know, provide feedback as you progress through this. That's all I have and if the board doesn't have anything else. We do have some people from the public care, if there's anyone who would like to make a comment about this. There's going to be plenty of opportunity because we'll get more details, but if you would, if you'd like to come up and state your name. Again, this is very early on. We don't have a lot of information at this point, so.
I know. Gloria Hicks, I'm a direct abutter.
Okay.
Rio, can you put up the slide with the direct overview of the finished design? Please, you know what the, thank you.
This one?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Rio has heard this a million times and he's well aware of the same thing that some of you have brought up, that you need to see the two pieces of property that this affects greatly. The two homes, the two abutters are 1,000 square foot, one level homes. So if you were to look at every, because this isn't separate from, it is a part of the whole, the whole development, you would be stunned to see the enormity of this density and height next to those homes. The biggest issue is that problem, the problem of the building in the right corner. That is, I can't even, I mean, it's so close to my neighbor's house, the direct abutter. It's unbelievable how close it would be. The height is a huge problem. The density is a problem. You've heard this from the public at every single meeting with the select board and all of the trust meetings. All of the surveys showed that, all of the conversations, all of the meetings have demonstrated that. Nobody is against affordable and attainable housing, myself included. One issue I do have with this is there is no attainable, it's all affordable, which is incredibly unfortunate. My other concern, which was brought up by a trust member, a board member, is twining. Every single square inch of South Chatham is being developed. Big homes right on the bike trail. This is conservation land. It is a very small parcel and I would like to see it protected. I don't see how it's going to be protected when you've got all these cutouts and access to it because that is where kids are going to be playing. It is conservation land. It should be treated and respected and valued as such. If you took out that building that is closest to my neighbor, that improves the density somewhat and it certainly prevents me from sitting in my living room and looking at somebody's bedroom because that's exactly what's going to happen. And nobody's talked about night sky. My night sky is gone with this project, absolutely obliterated. So those of you that haven't been to the site, I please implore you to please come walk the site. I would be happy if you contact me to walk you through it and show you, show you the property lines and where everything is going. It is certainly not better for the abutters. The access is a problem and we have been working with Rio about developing access because our right of way is going to be gone. There also, you can't see it, but part of this project is taking my neighbor's driveway, which is completely unnecessary. That driveway's been there forever. Shereen Davis lived in that house for a really long time. That's been there for decades and it should be left. There's just no reason to take it, but that, but that top building is the biggest problem. If that weren't there, it would decrease the density and it would also give us the privacy that we need. I realize that we need affordable housing, but it needs to be done thoughtfully and respectfully and not completely obliterating the neighborhood that is already existing. We have small homes and, and we are trying to work with Penrose, as Rio knows. We have conversations all the time, but this, it's just too much. It's too much for the, you're not, you're not working with the neighborhood, you're creating a neighborhood. This completely wipes out the neighborhood as we know it. So I think that's all I have and thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Catherine.
Sorry. Could you use the laser pointer and point to the building that you're discussing? The particular building that you're saying should be?
This one.
Okay.
My neighbor's house is right there.
Okay.
Right there. Okay.
Right there.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to understand.
Mine is probably right there.
Okay.
I mean, it's just, it's just a very small area of land. And that would make an enormous difference in our privacy, our night sky and, and our quality of life. I'm talking about my quality of life. I've just renovated my house completely. I don't want to move. I don't want to have to renovate another house. My neighbor, I think, is already looking at doing that. I mean, that just shouldn't be. It should work with the neighborhood, not force those of us that live there out. And I can guarantee you, I am not a civil engineer, I'm not an architect, but that topography is challenging and there is absolutely no way that the front of that is buildable. It is a big, huge gully. So that, that, I think, I think there was 3.75 acres purchased and only 2.25 acres is buildable. It's just too much density. But that, but that building up in the corner is the biggest problem. If you could get rid of that, that really helps and enhances our quality of life and living. This completely changes the way we live. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am? If you could state your name for the record.
Again, Janice Payne. I'm a neighbor to this. I just want to emphasize the traffic flow on Meeting House Road. Today, there was an accident at Four Corners and everything was directed down Meeting House Road. It was backed all the way up at the intersection of Route 28 and 137, which is Meeting House Road. And with this new community here, it's important for the town to look at, especially summer traffic, getting out onto Route 28 from Meeting House Road. Turning out, especially turning left off of Meeting House Road and onto Route 28 to head downtown Chatham. That is used all the time. We use it. People who live on Evergreen Lane, that is our main way in and out. South Chatham is becoming a dumping ground for Chatham. I mean, it's like we exist. We are not North Chatham. We are not one of the island houses or one of the mansions. We are trying to live peaceful lives. I support my neighbor here on Meeting House Road. I actually knew the people, the Rafeuses, who lived in one of those houses. So we're all just trying to, we want people to move into the community who will be here year-round. I'm a teacher. I know what's happening with the children in this town. We need more into our school system. So it is a very difficult situation to try to satisfy both sides here, but I'm thinking of safety regarding Meeting House Road and Route 28. If Four Corners is having an accident already on June 9th, imagine after July 4th, what happens along these main routes here? So access in and out to also school buses coming into this community for children. Your access in and picking them up, where is the bus stop going to be? Is it going to be right at the beginning of the community or are you going to go have the bus go all around the community? These are just thoughts in hearing this and good luck. I mean, I think it's wonderful that we have the property. The Catholic Church has an enormous parking lot. We have our farmer's market there now on Tuesday afternoons. Those kids are going to gravitate across the street and go up to the parking lot to kick a ball around or play baseball because that's the closest, largest area, open area. However, kids are in school till three o'clock. They do have sports at school. We do have volunteer park right on Sam Ryder's Road, so those are things all to take into consideration. I think it's a blending of understanding our community needs and wants and also trying to bring in new people into the community to feed into our future.
Thank you. And one more, come in here.
Carolyn McClellan, South Chatham. I'm not an abutter to this, but very, very close to it. And I just want to say a couple of things, some of which I've already said about the other property. One, I don't think height in and of itself is an issue. As some of you have mentioned, we have many properties on this, in this town that exceed that height limit. And I think the value you get by going three or four feet over the height or five feet over the height, you get a whole nother story. So that's going to be a smaller footprint to have the same amount of housing. So I think there's a huge value in doing that, so I'm appreciative of that. And I also don't think it's necessary, like people keep talking about not being able to see it. You drive down any road, you can see houses, like it doesn't, it's affordable housing. It doesn't have to be so far back and so hidden and so small that you can never see it from any, any point of view. It's unreasonable to think it's going to exist and not be seen from different places. I do appreciate Mrs. Hicks's comment about that one building. It would be nice if we could get it down a little bit to accommodate her, but, and the abutters in that area because I don't, I'd like to see what it would look like from there, how imposing it is. But overall, I think the density and the height is fine. I think the children, I think if I was a kid, I know, like I said, my kids grew up just across the street on 28, south of 28. It's a great neighborhood. You can go to the pond. You can go to Twine Field. The bike path is right there. There's a lot of advantages for a child growing up in this area. I am concerned, and I know you guys have taken a lot of heat on both ways, about this community building. I know at the last ZBA meeting, a lot of negative comments about why we have a community building. I think it's, a community building is a great thing. The one thing, certainly when it's not summer out, there isn't a lot of spaces. I don't think it's unreasonable. I think every, every apartment building or condo complex has some flex space for their tenants. Doesn't have to be a huge part of the property, but having a little flex space is reasonable for the tenants. All these people are going to be living in modest homes. They're not going to have extra bedrooms or extra spaces, so having a place to do a bridal shower or something or a Girl Scout meeting or something is reasonable to expect for the quality of life when they're not going to be outside. So I think those are all, I'd rather see some parking spaces go. I don't think, I don't know exactly how much is on this site, but generally that, I'm happy with 1.7, not two, not two spaces per unit. So I think we have a lot of one-bedroom units. You're probably going to have one car per unit for many of the residents. So other than that, that's all my comments, but thank you. You're doing good work.
And there's one other comment here. Okay.
Well, I wasn't prepared really for them to be here today, but I guess I
Could you introduce yourself for the record?
Brian Phillips, 374 Leans Road. Am I too close, talking too loud? A little closer. All right, so I mean, I'm, you know, grew up here. I thought the best affordable housing project we have is the shop block where people got to buy below-market homes. I think that's what's best for the community with the seasonal thing we just passed. You know, we have the ability to do tiny homes. So I mean, I know basically be saying that to redo this whole project, which I'm not opposed to at all. But I mean, if you do a whole, you know, neighborhood, a beautiful neighborhood that looks like the neighborhoods we have here already of tiny homes and do ownership, you know, ownership, and then, you know, I think then it would be okay to let them do buildings, rental buildings that are taller, you know, to compromise. But, you know, I really think what this community needs is homeownership. And then the other thing I was looking, I haven't seen what the AMI is for this, but the whole affordable housing thing, I would like you guys to take a look at. The income and rent limits of 2025 HU D Barnstable County. But I mean, you have one-bedroom apartments and the other thing that's going to be like, it's over, it's in between the 120, in between the 110, 120. So like $3,000 a month for a one-bedroom apartment? I don't know how that's affordable. It's not right? I got it right here. Well, you, you texted me this.
Hey, okay, okay.
So in general, I don't, I don't know what it is.
Just so you know, we generally don't control the type of ownership or how that is structured, whether it's rental or not. Our purview is pretty much the site and that's, we tried to hold ourselves to that because we don't really have any jurisdiction over ownership or how that is all structured. That's outside, that's other entities within the
I don't know. What are you going to plan? I don't know if you want to plan for homeownership.
Whether it's, whether it's a owner, owner home or an apartment, we look at all the same site-related issues, okay? That's all I can tell you. That's all I can tell you.
All right. Well, thanks. I guess I said what I had to say. Probably wasn't helpful to anybody, but
Well, I You're getting into areas that the planning board does not get involved with. We don't get involved with whether it's owned or rented or anything like that.
Okay.
We don't. That's not our purview.
All right, well, now I know. Thanks.
Okay. If there's not any more, I'm sure we're going to be seeing this again, we'll have an opportunity to speak, so if there's no other comments, then we can really have a motion to Oh, excuse me. Did you want any closing comments that you'd like to make?
Well, I guess if I have the opportunity, I'd just be real quick. We appreciate the feedback tonight. We'll be continuing to progress these drawings. We'll try to incorporate as much of the advice that we got back, and at the next iteration of the design, we can send you the, whatever that progress set is, 30%, 40%.
That would be terrific.
That's great.
Really appreciate that.
Yeah, that's great.
All right. Thank you very much for allowing us to come tonight.
Thank you very much.
Could I have a motion?
Before I make a motion to adjourn, I want to apologize to Bobby for saying shut up earlier. You are, you are. But anyway, based on that, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. And let's do a roll call vote. Catherine?
Yes, I approve.
Warren?
Approve.
Approve.
Charlene?
Frank?
Approve.
Approved.
And Art Sprouse, I approve, and the time is 7:29 PM.
Okay.